Yep, good to go.
Announcement is made that adequate notice this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10 colon 4, 6 at second New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Toskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Here.
Mr. Paree.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Chairman Ira Kane.
Present.
We have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
President.
Start of the pledge of allegiance. Somebody stole the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? Hear none, see none. I guess we'll go right into the cases, huh, Nora?
Hmm? Sorry?
Nothing else, we're ready, we're ready for...
Ready to go right into it.
Application 2328 Bethany Church, 419 East Walsley Road. D variances to convert a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Davies Law Firm, Texas, New Jersey, on behalf of Bethany Church.
You may proceed.
Thank you. It's not really converting very much. The existing structure will have absolutely no changes to the outside. The only thing that's happening is two doorways are going to be closed off. That's it, there's already... The kitchens that are there are going to stay there, bathrooms, bedrooms, nothing else is going to change.
Did you say kitchens as in plural?
There are two.
Existing?
They already existed. And this is not just a house, it's a parsonage. My client's going to testify that in fact it is used only, and will be used only, on behalf... I'm sorry.
Microphone.
I'm a courtroom lawyer, I have a tendency to speak on my feet.
Comes out.
It comes out.
You can take it out of the holder.
Okay, so it's a parsonage, it's only used by the people who work for the church, the preachers that work for the church. It will continue to be used only for that purpose. It'll never be rented, it'll never be split off or sold, it'll always be part of the church property. It'll always be an integral part of what this church needs in order to function. And the only thing that's happening here, the only reason for the application is because there are two doors that allow passage from one side of the house to the other side of the house. And we want to close off those doors just so that it's a little bit more private, so that a pastor and an assistant pastor can have a little more separation for their families because these pastors have spouses and children as well.
Can't you just keep them locked, those doors?
We could. Noise is an issue and a little bit more permanency. And of course, if you've got small children in the house, the way you might with a pastor who's got a couple of kids, a doorway is always a question as to whether it's going to stay closed. So, just to improve usability, to reduce noise, and to actually split it so that it can be used as two separate units, the way it is now, but with just that one change, closing off those doors.
Will any of your witnesses have any history on the building as to how long the kitchens have been there?
My client would be able to testify.
Okay, so maybe you want to swear him in and then we can...
Sir, if you could raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony about to give before the board, it's your suit, the truth self-help you got?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Russell Dixon. R-U-S-S-E-L. Dixon. D-I-C-K-S-E-N.
You're sworn, just speak up into the microphone.
Yes, my recollection from seeing the town records is 1985, prior to Bethany Church, purchasing the property. The addition was put on the single-family house to add a kitchen where the garage was, and then at two floors above that area, which the home is very large, 11 bedrooms, so we're looking to divide that up.
Nora, do we don't have any records on any variances that were granted at the time this construction was done?
Not that I know of, I did not look.
Full baths are upstairs?
Yes, there's bathrooms on each side.
So... There's this first and second floor, so there's...
There's a first and a second. On one side of the building, there's actually three floors.
Okay, so where are you sealing off? Are you sealing off both floors?
Both floors, pretty much down the middle of the house.
Yeah.
Where the, you know, the part of the building with the three floors. It was in a smooth transition, also there was a slight step down. So it just, it just makes sense as far as where to divide it.
So you found a door on the first floor, a door on the second floor, getting rid of them, putting in a wall?
Just put a permanent wall there, yep.
And so you said approximately 1984, did you say is when?
Approximately 1985.
1985, okay. And when did the church acquire the property?
Bethany Church purchased the property in approximately 2013.
And if we were to grant the approval, would you be willing to have a deed restriction that if the property is ever sold, it would have to revert to one, a single-family house with only one kitchen?
Yes, that wouldn't be an issue.
How do you think they got two kitchens?
Well, plumber and carpenter and put them in, very simple. The church didn't own the house when that was converted?
Correct, we had nothing to do with that. When we purchased it, those, the kitchen, both kitchens were in place.
It really becomes moot if the board approves it the way you agree. Well, I think it's a circumstance that it's not going to be a two-family house. It's going to be two units for a religious environment. Because this board, in the 34 years I've gone on, has never approved a two-family house, except where a testimony was given that it was... It predates zoning. I mean, I remember having an elderly attorney from North Bedworth Road, Cannon Geiser. You weren't on the board then when he... And he came and he had personal knowledge of this being, it was two-unit houses on one property, dating back to the 30s, I think. You were here, John, right? Yeah. So, I mean, I would like to structure variance, you know, the resolution that we're not granting a two-family, we're granting a modification to the parsonage.
Where two separate families would be able to live in.
Permit separate dwelling units within. That will permit separate dwelling units, I guess. Well, could we put into the restriction... But he's already agreed to convert it back.
But could we put in a, do we need to put in a restriction that they have to be employees of the church?
Well, they say it's not going to be, it's not going to be a rental.
Correct.
So we can put that in the resolution also, it was not a rental property.
Church use.
Yeah, church use, yeah.
I hate to put a lot of restrictions in, but like I said, in 34 years, we've turned down a lot of proposed two-family houses and illegal two-family houses that we won't grant a variance to, because like yours, it was put in in the 80s. Zoning goes back to, what, 52?
Yeah.
Yeah, so... Um, D variances, they need a plan? No. Because it's basically inherently beneficial use. Right. So the board has to determine whether there's any negative impact resulting from this. That's simple as that.
But this...
Especially the deed restriction, it takes it away.
Yep.
But this says to convert a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling, do we need to change that?
In the resolution, yes.
Okay.
President. You don't have a planner for here tonight, do you?
Oh, we do have the architect.
You have the architect, but you don't have a planner.
You might have a planner.
Because normally with the D variances, I mean, you know, having John next to me is good enough for me. But just for the record, I think we should state that there is no planner here, and we're going based on the testimony of the pastor. Is the house currently being used for two families? Is the house currently being used for two families?
Yes.
And how long has that been?
Approximately about a year or so. The person that was there, there's a single person, and then there's a family on one side, a single person on the other side.
And they're church-related people?
Yeah, yes.
Pastors or sisters?
Yeah, we're not charging rent. Yeah, one is in the process of moving to Japan for ministry.
How many members in that church?
The Parsonage location has about 90, about 90 people.
Any other questions by the board? Any members in the public have any questions of this witness and testimony given this evening? I hear none, see none. You don't want to sum or anything, it just...
Just very briefly, church obviously is an inherently beneficial structure, this is used as part of that, in fact, my client's testified it's a very important part of that use. Therefore, we wouldn't be looking at the normal, very rigorous restrictions on a new variance, we'd be looking at, we seek a balancing test, and in this case, you're simply closing off a couple of doors, you're making no changes to the use, the number of automobiles, the number of people, nothing else is changing. So for that, we would ask...
Any members in the public who speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none, see none. Inherently beneficial use. Applicant has agreed to maintain it as a part of the church and not commercial rentals or anything like that. I think the restrictions that you mentioned are perfect. Okay. Someone frame a resolution?
Application 23:28 Bethany Church, 419 East Walsley Road. Block 742, Lot 60, Zone R-2, recommend granting a D variance to convert a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling, with agreeing for the deed restrictions for reverting back to one kitchen if it's sold, and it not being a rental property.
Judge Hughes. Any discussion, Nora?
Second, ready.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Toskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Paree.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Result of the variance is granted. We will memorialize this at our next meeting, which will be the first weekend in September. You may be free to proceed.
Thank you very much for your time.
Good luck, God bless. Is that the safest D variance you've ever had?
Yes.
Very close to it. The poor architect wrote all his papers there. Thank you.
We like the no-brainers. Have a good day.
Good night, John. I was waiting, I was waiting for the... Uh, can we join the 7 o'clock meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Good night. On record.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given, and that is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10:4, at second, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, you want to call the roll?
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Toskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Here.
Mr. Paree.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Chairman Ira Kane.
Present.
Our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
We will dispense with the pledge of allegiance, because we did that at the 7 o'clock meeting. Is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? Not. I hear none, see none. Okay, so we are, the next application is 2171 Puddingstone Developers, which is being, is, was carried to this meeting for purposes of the next meet...
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joseph O'Neill for Puddingstone. I believe September 27th is one of the dates being discussed. We would like to carry it to that date, grant all necessary extensions through the end of October, since September is so close, end of September is so close to towards that.
That said, do we have a motion to carry Puddingstone application 2171 to September 27th, 2023, at Parsonage High School? If you're here for that meeting, please listen to me, it's not going to be at the Hills this time. Parsonage High School. For those who live in Puddingstone, if you don't know where Parsonage High School is, it's on the corner of Baldwin and... I'm sorry. Anyway. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hmm? 7:30, 7:30.
7:30, thank you.
Okay. Do we want to set the other date, do we? Uh, no, we'll do it that night, she's got the date reserved. Okay. She got the date, and we have a, we have a backup date reserved already, so... Okay. Application 2314 Ryan Kelly, 85 Upper Rainbow Trail. C variances to legalize a six-foot-high solid stockade fence.
Sir, both you and your wife, are you going to testify, both of you, or just one?
I just...
Okay, could you raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about to give before the board, it's your self-help you got?
Yes.
And for the record, you're Ryan Kelly?
Yes, sir.
And you're the owner of 85 Upper Rainbow Trail, Block 116, Lot 5. You're sworn, have a seat, please, speak into the microphone, Mr. Chairman, please, this one.
Do you have any pictures or anything of the...
I do, I have some small pictures, I printed out of what the fence structure currently looks like, and I'm asking the board if I could leave the fence as is.
So we're going to mark those A1?
Should I bring them up?
Yeah, bring them up.
How many pictures? Seven.
What is the history of this fence? You pulled it up and then somebody said it was not legal?
Yes, so being new to applying for the permit, I didn't do the steps correctly, I only learned after the fact. We found a forever home last August, Rainbow Lakes, I was born and raised in Parsonage, you know, at Ginnerville, loved the town, loved the community, it was ecstatic, I started my family forever home at this residence. I came into the property quickly, I put up the fence, I applied for the permit, and I guess I didn't do the correct steps with the permit, so therefore I didn't follow the correct rules, and had three different violations. The fence is on the corner lot, that is why I'm here, it is over the six-foot variance. There are bushes and shrubs that are along the side that were always there prior to purchasing the property. It's kind of tucked in behind all that. I was wanting to leave the fence as is because I don't see it as too much of an obstruction to the view of the corner, coming up to the stop sign, there's a large, maybe 75 feet to it or longer, I'm not exacted that measurement.
There's some vegetation between the roadway and that section of the fence that's in violation.
Yes, that was there prior.
Which, Highwood Road shows those pictures. Yeah. And they're not going to take the vegetation out, right?
No, I was planning on leaving it.
Well, it softens the fence. Is your, is your property on the corner, or is it...
Yeah. Yes.
So you've got two front yards?
Yes, I do.
And how far back is the fence from the right-of-way?
I don't have the exact measurement.
It's not. It's not? It's, it's, looks like, I'm guessing, Jazz, what do you think, it's 10 feet or 8 feet from the pavement?
Yeah, it looks like for the, based on the survey, it's practically on the property line.
Right. So from the pavement, and you, I don't know if the pictures have got the, yet, but there's bushes and stuff along the road.
Yeah, it could be, it could be 5 to 10 feet for the right-of-way itself, for the edge of pavement.
So did you say it's in the right-of-way?
No.
It's not?
It's on his property, but it's right up close to his...
To the right-of-way?
Right-of-way line, and then you can see on the survey, and it's hard to get, I guess, I'm guessing it's 8 feet thereabouts, but the pictures showed shrubbery along that side of the fence, right? If we were to grant approval, we would most likely to see something in the resolution that the vegetation will remain, or be improved or replaced, you know, so that vegetation's always there. Because if it buffers the fence, it's not, you know, and this is not a white stockade, stockade fence, it's not white?
No, it's a texture-treated wood fence.
Which doesn't stand out so bad. Hmm? Which doesn't stand out so bad. No, 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 6-foot white fence looks like it. Looks like surrounding it, for instance. All right, so... It was about 6 feet somewhere, isn't it? The fence is 6 feet, but there's no numbers that I can figure out where the fence is to the edge of pavement.
So the fence is on three sides?
The only pieces of the variance is that corner on...
Highwood Road?
Highwood, and as you go back to the setback.
Okay.
The rest of it's... Any other questions by the board? So technically, we're just granting a variance for the 6-foot port that's in the front yard, front yard setback. Right. And the front yard is Upper Rainbow Trail, that's your front yard? No, Highwood. Highwood.
There's technically two front yards between the corner lot, I have Highwood and Upper Rainbow Trail.
What's your address? Your mailing address is...
85 Upper Rainbow is the mailing address.
So that's really the front, the front of the...
Yes, yes, that is the front.
Uh, Highwood Road is a side street.
Yes.
But you're also front on that.
Yes.
Well, you know how much I'm enamored with 6-foot fences? Any other questions?
No.
Any questions by members of the public of this witness and testimony given this evening? I hear none, see none. I'm trying to get a read here as to...
I'm, I'm trying to think, when was the last time we allowed 6-foot fences, solid?
Couple weeks ago. Couple weeks ago, same situation, it was there, and it had significant vegetation around it. Where was that, where was that house, anybody remember? Was it Rainbow Lakes?
It had no neighbors, right? Wasn't it on a cul-de-sac or something?
Yeah. Yeah, but it was the, it was a real little lot, too, there.
It is a little.
Anything else you'd like to add? You'll have to be sworn in if you want to talk. You can, no, come and get sworn in if you want.
I'm happy to hear you.
You can, you can talk, you just have to be sworn in.
Ma'am, raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about to give before the board, it's your self-help you got. And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Georgia Steppos, S-S-A-T-E-M-P-T, as in Tom, E-F as in Frank, O-S-S-A-T-E-M. I haven't counted, but given that Rainbow Lakes is a decent-sized community, there's a house two down from us that has 6-foot fence, and our fence installer was the one that encouraged us to go with that, so we'd be more cohesive with the other fences in the community.
He didn't tell you to get a permit?
Well, we applied for the, we applied for the permit, it was approved, he just didn't follow the steps correctly, because we had never done it before, so we didn't, when he got the call that it was approved, we didn't follow.
Yeah, I just followed the steps incorrectly.
I could, I could take you all over, all over Lake Hiawatha and point out all the illegal 6-foot fences, believe me. I know all of them because we never approved the variances for them. So, it, let me just ask, let me see, are any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none, see none. The minimus, it's, you know...
I, I have one question, actually, the, the front part in this picture where there's no, no shrubbery or anything, is that a do, a gate open and close, or is that solid?
There is a gate on that side, on the front-facing side of the house, the home, there's a gate to walk through the yard that way.
Okay. I'll just...
Are we okay, or, yeah?
Think so, what's about that side?
Yeah, I think because you've got some vegetation.
Yeah, I guess that's the only thing that's...
Well, we, we'll put in the, in the resolution that he has to maintain the vegetation, and hopefully improve, prove it to make it less... Do we need to go into conference? David?
I mean, look, I'm, I'm, yeah, let's just do it.
Want to do conference?
Yeah.
Motion to go into conference?
Motion. Because you called me David.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, somebody want to start?
I'll start. Um, I'm not necessarily, because this one has the vegetation, I'm not necessarily opposed, it's not obtrusive, but I get concerned about is, is this our new standard? We're going to start approving 6-foot with vegetation? Or we're going to start approving wooden 6-foot with vegetation?
Well, David, unfortunately, unfortunately, they're here to ask for forgiveness and opposition, okay? And I've already approached to the council that if we continue to get variance applications for people that have already done the work, there's going to be a penalty phase on, on doing, on, if we grant them the variance, okay, there'll be, there'll be some sort of surcharge for not going the proper route, and I, I mean, whether we get it or not is another thing. But I think we need something like that, because we get application upon application upon application of the people that have done the work, and, you know, you, you don't want to be the miserable guy, although, believe me, believe me, we've done it, we've done it, where we had people remove parts of patio because they significantly over, overbuilt what they were supposed to build. And, and no, it's not going to be the, I think it's going to be on a case, it has to be on a case by case.
Understood.
Yeah, it just so happens we've had...
Every case is not coming.
Well, how many, how many 6-foot fences have we approved in the last 10 years? None that weren't already up.
But that gives a guideline to people.
But it puts us in a tough position. No one up here wants to be the person that says, "Sorry, you just wasted $5,000."
Well, you had that one on Lake Shore Drive, where we made the woman cut it down.
Uh-huh.
Remember? She had to cut it down to four feet.
I remember. Because the contractor told her it was okay, and they couldn't find it.
Any comments down here?
No. I just feel the same way about it, like today's point, it's just, because I, you see, we've seen a lot of them lately with, everything's been done, and obviously, I'm only a couple of years on the board, but we've seen, I've seen a lot of it in my short time here, things being done, and I, if we can get counsel to get that fine, if, however we got to go about it, we really need to push for that, because asking for forgiveness is, again, he had the right intentions, but we keep saying yes, we're never going to be able to say no.
That's the other point, is unfortunately, you've got contractors running around.
Absolutely.
That are, are bypassing the permit process.
It happened to me, I had a paper patio put in, and I had to come back for it. Well, they stopped me mid-work. But yeah, that's, that's my feeling.
Any questions, any comments? No, I, I kind of agree with everybody else's concern, but I hate to say, you know, tear it down, especially since this happens to... The fact that number one's a corner lot, number two, it's got the excess vegetation, three, it's not hurting anybody, it's not blocking, not blocking any vision or anything.
Yeah, the only reason I'm considering is the vegetation. That's the only reason I'm considering.
So Toskowitz is...
Ditto. Ditto.
Same thing, especially engineering reports says that there's no impact on the...
I would give it a, I'm going to give it, I'm going to give it a roll, then, yes. Me too. Okay, motion to go into conference?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Someone want to frame a resolution of granting the variance?
Application 23:14 Ryan Kelly, 85 Upper Rainbow Trail. Block 116, Lot 5, Zone R3, recommend granting a C variance to legalize a 6-foot-high solid stockade fence contrary to Section 430-11 A and B with the stipulation that the vegetation will not be moved and will only be improved upon.
Second, ready.
Any discussion, Nora, call the roll?
Berkowitz.[1759.02]
Yes.
Joshkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Messarella.
Yes.
Karik.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Hurricane.
Yes. The variance is granted. Word of advice, if you're gonna do anything else, go to the zoning office. Don't go to the building department, go to the zoning office first and see what the parameters, and you can get a copy of the information, um, piece of paper, you know what, what, uh, our zone you live in. You can get a, a piece of paper, and we'll give you all the setbacks and lock coverages, so if you want to put something up and you're, and you're already at 20% of lock coverage or whatever it is, you'll know, okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, good luck.
Um, yeah, I promise, positive, but, um, in, I, I was trying to go online and read all the fine print on Parsippany's website, and I think, um, just a piece of feedback, the thing about two-foot yards is really challenging to find, honestly. I had to like really, really navigate, and I think like, I don't know if variance is, it sounds like you're seeing one, I don't know if it's from people that have two-foot yard, but if that's a thing, then maybe the purpose or the control, I couldn't find it.
I, so it's in the back.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, application twenty-three, twenty-six, Mora Mick, six Epseken Road, D variance to operate an art school within a residential property. You may proceed whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, board professionals, Frederick Zelli, Post Pollock, on behalf of the applicant. This is regarding the application of Mara Danielle Mick, doing business as Lakeside Art Studio, six, six, Epseken Road, block three sixty-six, lot two, which is located near our four zone. This is also a mea culpa application, albeit fourteen years into the operation. We do not know exactly the genesis of it, but some time ago, Ms. Mick was served with the notice of violation because her painting school, her art painting school, uh, was being operated, is not a permitted use in the zone. So we're here this evening seeking a D one use variance to enable her to continue with her school. I have two witnesses this evening, Ms. Mick herself and Kendra Leely of Kyle McManus, who's our professional planner. We believe everything should be in order paperwork wise, the application of services provided correctly on our office, thank you. We have no exhibits, photographs that we may rely upon in testimony are already part of your file. If there's nothing further, I would ask that Ms. Mick be sworn in.
Ma'am, if you could raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony about to give before the board, is the truth, does it help you God?
Yes.
And for the record, you're Mora Mick?
Yes.
And you are the applicant, um, for six Epseken Road?
Yes.
Right, uh, you're sworn, if you could just sit down and speak into the microphone, Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn.
Ms. Mick, just for the record, you go by Danielle typically, is that?
Yes, yes.
And just for the record again, where do you reside?
Six Epseken Road, Parsippany.
And how long have you lived there?
Twenty-one years.
As I stated to the board a moment ago, we're here seeking a use variance in order to allow you to continue to operate your painting business from your home, is that your understanding?
Yes.
Can you describe the business a little bit, what exactly do you do?
I'm an art educator and artist, and I teach classes to students from the age of eight until ninety.
You have to speak up a little bit, Kim.
Okay. I'm an art educator and artist, and I teach students from the age of eight to ninety. Um, I've been teaching classes, uh, for fourteen years, and I have a very small private school, there's no signage, I do have a website, and at the peak of my business, I was teaching sixteen classes a week, never had a complaint, and since the pandemic, I'm down to four classes a week, which is two daytime, three classes on Saturday for kids, and one class on Friday for adults.
When you say kids, what ages are we talking about?
Eight to eighteen.
And how long do your classes last?
The kids' classes are an hour each, and the adults are two hours.
And how many, let's start with the youth classes, how many students do you have in a typical youth class?
Eight.
Is it ever more than eight?
No.
Um, what about your adult classes, how many adults?
Four.
When you have your youth classes, let's focus, focus on that, is there any parking requirement, or are they typically dropped off and picked up by the parents?
It's all drop-off, the parents don't come into the studio.
And what about your adult classes, how do they handle parking, as soon as they have vehicles?
Yeah, they park on my property, I put in a parking apron on the front, uh, several years ago, where three cars are, and when I started the school, I put, um, pavers down the side of my property, which holds three to four cars.
I'm going to show you two photographs that have been submitted to the board already. Your practice will be the fifth and sixth, I'm sorry, yours will be the third. Uh, we'll hold this up for the board to see while we're looking at. Now, is, is that the apron that you're referring to?
Yes, it's the cars that park diagonally, which come in, not these trucks, you can get three.
So typically, these two vehicles are parked essentially parallel, you have a photograph.
Here's a picture of the three diagonal.
And when you have your adult classes, is that how your students typically park on the diagonal?
Yes.
And they are off the road?
Correct. And then this, these are the pavers that I put in down the side of the carpet, where you can get three to four cars.
Did you need and did you receive a permit for that parking apron?
On the front?
Uh huh.
No.
No, you did not receive one?
No. There'd always been parking there when I bought the house, it had pea pebbles, and then I decided to get rid of the pea pebbles because it was really hard to shovel.
How, how long ago was that about?
Five years.
So that, that is, that was your yard that you paved over?
Yes.
You did indicate just now that when you purchased the property, it was already designated, but pea gravel wasn't grass, is that?
Correct.
Could, uh, how, counsel, if I can, how much of that was gravel? Was it?
Is it approximately the same dimensions?
The same space.
So you just paved where there's gravel before?
Yes.
So it's one structure, the home and the studio is one structure?
Yes, if you look at this picture of the, my house.
Yep.
The first floor is all open studio space, and there's a kitchen and a small powder room. And at some point, they added on the back, like a lot of these homes at the lake, and there's like storage space.
So you store all your, is it paint or is it?
Art supplies.
Paint?
Painting, drawing, pastels.
All there?
Yes.
Have you had problems in the past ever with neighbors that have complained that you're operating a business in a residential area?
No, and a couple are here tonight.
I assume we're gonna hear from them.
Okay. And a couple are on vacation.
Hmm.
But you've never had anyone complain as that actor about school?
No.
Can we, for, Mrs. Zelli said you received a notice from the township that you were in violation.
Correct.
Did you ever contact the township as to how, how that came about?
Yes, and they wouldn't tell me.
Okay.
An anonymous.
But now I know. Pardon? A complaint had been made. Right, but no one told me who the complaintee was.
They don't tell you that.
They don't tell you that. No. The, I think you asked, uh, there's another question I was gonna ask, but I think you've answered it, the first floor is the studio space plus a kitchen?
On the first floor, yes.
And the second floor is your living space?
Correct.
You be there by yourself or you have a family?
Yes, by myself.
Do you have another kitchen in the second floor or no?
No.
Just the first floor?
Ms. Mick, there's two more photographs to your right that have also been submitted to the board, what did the, actually, what do those depict, can you just hold them up?
Okay, this shows the layout space during the pandemic where I had to space the students, um, in the first floor area. It's open space, they have individual tables. And they're happy campers.
So how do you know that you're in compliance for bathrooms, uh, safety issues? How do we know you're even in compliance for anything like that?
Why don't we approach it this way, what does, uh, do you have a bathroom available for your students if they need one?
Yeah, it's right there on the first floor.
First floor.
Right, right off the studio. Right over here. So there is facilities.
And there's obviously the front door, is there any other door, uh, egress, ingress or egress door to that area?
Yeah, if you go through here, there's a storage space and there's a back door that goes into that space.
So you have two exterior ingress and egress doors?
For the first floor.
And is your building fit with smoke detectors at the harbor?
Yes.
Are you, so, as, as the owner of a school, are you subject to inspection by any government entity such as the Board of Health, uh, Department of Education, fire, do, do you have to be regulated at all, or can you just do whatever you want and call it an art school?
Um, as far as I know, because it's a small private, single proprietor, I don't have to follow any of those guidelines.
As far as you know?
As far as I know.
You've never been cited by anyone for any violation of anything along those lines?
No.
Does your business need any license?
A license?
You're operating a school?
Um, I've been teaching forty years, so my credentials, I had assumed would speak for myself.
Not necessarily, I would imagine.
That's a question.
Well.
I think it's, it's, I think it's the same question that was just asked, she said she's not aware of any requirements that she needs to follow in that regard, she's not been cited by anyone for any kind of violation.
Let's go back to the size of the classes. The eight to eighteen are four, or is that the adults?
That's the adults, the eight to eighteen are the, um, are eight students in a class.
Eight students, and there are two classes of that size?
Three.
Three. And the adult classes are four, and there's how many classes?
One.
One. And the eight to eighteen group comes in during the week, or they?
Saturdays.
They're only Saturday?
Only Saturdays.
And the adults are other times?
Fridays.
Right. So it's only Friday and Saturday then?
Yes.
Is that because of the slowdown, were you?
Yeah.
So you actually were operating more days when business was good?
Yes.
Is that your goal?
I think that's gonna become an issue.
No, that's not my goal anymore because I am getting older.
Yeah, I think that's gonna become an issue, I think if the boards were to seriously consider this, they're gonna have to set limits on class size and how many times it occurs.
Well, I went from sixteen classes a week with no complaints to down to four.
But that's not necessarily the only guideline we're going with, there were, you know, rules and regulations. To me, you, you are operating, just in the beginning of the case of what we're hearing, you are operating a business in what seems to be a residential area. So that's a problem, usually it's a, it's a big problem for me, I think that's one of the things that I don't usually agree with. You have the best intentions, you might be doing everything in theory right for you and for your students, but that doesn't necessarily make it correct from the law side or from some of your neighbors, you know, from the neighbors, they might, you know, it's an issue, so.
The other piece that's a little concerning to me is that we're, we're looking to approve a business, it does not appear that you've officially reported this business to any organization or permitting body, so when you say you're not aware of whatever regulations you need to be aware of to run a school, and I'm using the word school because that's what you've called it, how would anybody know it's even in existence to inspect it? So if we're gonna be doing this.
Should it be sprinkled, you have paint and stuff like that, and it's a school, should there be a sprinkler? I don't know the answer to that.
I do.
Probably yes, oh, because you're a teacher.
So I, I'm, I'm, you know, just a little concerned that, you know, you're asking us to approve something that has had zero and formal inspections in the history of its existence.
How do you have?
It presents.
Do you have a name for, you have a name for yourself?
Lakeside Art Studio.
Okay, and do you advertise anywhere?
On the internet.
Okay, and that's where your students come from, from you know that? Have any of your?
Word of mouth, yes.
Have any of your students ever been around your neighbors?
Have they been what?
Have any of your students come from your neighbors?
Yes.
Norris, the fire department? Did they have any reports, fire department?
I don't know, maybe eight or nine. One is here tonight.
They still exist?
Moved into the neighborhood. Now and then. And found out I was teaching art classes and she registered, she lives across the street.
Did she say how she found out?
I believe she saw the students coming and going and was asking me.
Okay.
I don't have a sign.
I appreciate the concerns the boards expressing, we're kind of being in a position to be negative here to prove that we don't have to report to somebody without any indication of the somebody, who the somebody would be. Uh, the township has obviously been on notice of this for quite some time now, uh, since they were pushing us to get this application filed, and it conceded they took us a little longer than we had intended. Other than the operation of a business in a residential zone, nothing else has been raised by the township at all.
But, but I, I hate to interrupt, but sometimes unfortunately, either through miscommunications or whatever, it seems we've had some issues with getting engineering reports and, or them getting back to us, and the same with fire, that we've had a couple of cases recently that the, the fire haven't commented. We can't just accept that silence means that they're agreeing with anything, it's an issue.
I advise clients and representative boards frequently that we will not object to and we will consent to any law that we're required to follow in the first place. Uh, I would have no objection to a condition, uh, that she has to comply with any applicable licensing requirements, any applicable safety requirements, and to the extent that she would be unable to do so, then we would have to appeal to whatever the appropriate body would be to seek deviation from that. I think that would address the board's concerns to have that kind of a condition in place.
I think I would have to hear from the fire before I would be able to vote on anything.
Is this application a resent to the fire department?
No, it, because it was a use, uh, I would think construction would be the place, you know, to deal with the requirements or a class and.
So we, we grant her a variance, she's got commercial property there, right?
Yeah.
That piece of the, that, and I don't know her personal tax situation, is she, is she, you know, declaring that part of her house as business property? But regardless of that, does, does it go onto the town rolls so that the fire inspector knows to go inspect there because it is now a commercial piece of property?
If it goes through the construction department, the, uh, fire subcode, uh, would look at that aspect, it, it needing to be sprinkled.
But not, not, but it's not gonna go to the building department? Because she's done no construction.
She hasn't, but she has to sprinkler, or sprinkle, you have that in there?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there, there's kind of another aspect to this which our planner will address. But the only reason that we require a variance in the first place is because your definition of a, uh, your conditional use definition of a home occupation includes a school such as this, but only if it's one student at a time.
Like piano teachers and people like that.
Along those lines, right. Uh, so the only reason we're here, at least for a D one, as opposed to a D three possibly, uh, is because we have more than one student at a time. So it would seem that situations where it's only one student, these issues would not be coming up. And I don't know if the fact that we have more than one student really changes that, uh, on a theoretical basis.
I think the board would disagree that eight kids versus one is a significant difference, it does trigger something.
Yeah, of course.
As I said, I understand the, the board's concerns, what I've offered, I think is the best way to handle it. You're, you're not giving up anything from a safety perspective or a licensure perspective as long as you've covered it in your resolution.
Why, why don't you suggest the board carry this matter and submit to the fire department, fire marshal, with an inventory of what you have in the storage room and find out what it is? Because otherwise, you're asking to go on faith and hope, and I don't think you're gonna go that way.
I understand and appreciate the suggestion. Might I request, since we have our planner here this evening, and obviously she's paid, that you'd be able to testify?
I think we can go ahead and hear the planner.
Yeah, let's, let's do that, I don't, you have to bring him back.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I have no further questions from Ms. Mick at this point. I have no further questions from Ms. Mick.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given this evening? Questions, do you have any, do I have any questions? No. Next witness?
Oh.
You have a question, Joe?
Oh, I'm, I'm, no, you can't make statements at this point. Only questions. There'll be time for statements.
Do you issue degrees?
No.
What was that?
Issue degrees.
Degreed?
There's no degrees.
Next, next, want to bring up your next?
No. Can we call Kendra Leelie, our professional planner?
Ma'am, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear firm testimony about you, the board is true self of God?
I do.
For the record, can you state and spell your name?
Kendra Leelie, K E N D R A L E E L I E.
And you are a professional planner?
I am.
All your licenses are in full force and effect?
They are.
And you testified either before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Not before this board, but many others, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the witnesses swear in quaffing.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Leelie, what is your professional affiliation?
I am a professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I have a certification from the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is a national certification. I'm also a licensed landscape architect. I work for the firm of Kyle McManus. I'm a consulting planner, and I have been doing this type of work for almost thirty years, mostly as a board planner, but I do do some private work. And I'm here to provide testimony as it relates to the use variance.
And you've been tasked with preparing planning analysis and testimony for this evening with regards to this application?
I have.
Would you please give us the benefit of what you've discovered?
Absolutely. So as part of my review of the application, obviously I looked at the application. I looked at your professionals' reports. I've looked at your master plan, your zoning ordinance. I've done a site visit at the, the property and certainly talked to the client and, and the attorney with regards to the merits of the application and the details, which you just heard a little bit about. The property, as was indicated, is Six Apseken Road within the township. The lot itself, and I don't think it was described yet, is ten thousand square feet in the R4 zone. It contains a two-story, single-family detached home, has a deck and a shed and some grass-paved driveway, which was described. The lots in a, in a small, in a small neighborhood of single-family homes and certainly close to the lake, within a hundred and fifty feet of, of the lake. The applicant seeking a D1 use variance, which we just discussed, the reason why is because a, and I, and I, while it's maybe been categorized as a school, I would say it's instruction. It's tutoring for folks that want to understand how to better provide art. It's not necessarily a registered school. It is art instruction. So that is what we are asking for. Art instruction of more than one person is not permitted in, in this R4 zone. As was indicated, we're talking about four classes a week, one on a Friday and three on Saturday. The classes take place in a room, which you all just took a look at. And there are parking spaces for six vehicles, as was indicated. Three in the pull-off and then three to four in the paved area on the side of the property. There are no site improvements that are being proposed with this particular application. The R4 district, and just so you all are aware, the R4 district permits several uses. Public community center, public auditorium, public library, museum, art gallery, public park, public playground. It also allows for public assembly for not-for-profit organizations. As was indicated by our attorney, conditional use also includes a home occupation. And that home occupation is defined as instruction for one person. It allows for a school and a childcare facility as a conditional use, a place of worship, and as I indicated, assembly uses. So, and you all are very familiar with the required testimony for D1 variance. The D1 variance, we must prove to you that we satisfy the positive and the negative criteria. The positive criteria is essentially a special reason. What, what is the special reason that you would grant this particular variance for allowing for a use that isn't otherwise permitted in this zoning district? And typically, the special reasons that are given, and the one that you always probably hear, is that it promotes the general welfare. That is a municipal land use law goal, objective, or, or, or goal. And in other words, the use or the development, and I'm going to say in this particular instance, the use, because we're not talking about development, is found to promote the general welfare. When you find that it does meet the general welfare, you can find that a special reason is provided. So how do we do that in this situation? How do we define how we're, we're meeting general welfare? Well, our courts have held that the applicant must demonstrate that the subject property is particularly suitable for the proposed use. So why is this property that we're talking about at Six Apseken suitable for the instruction of four to eight people on the property? It does not look at, we don't, you don't have to look at, and we don't have to prove to you that there's no other potential location for this type of use, but that we're looking specifically at the property and why does this property, what's peculiar about it that would accommodate this use adequately? So we look at the property. First, and this is somewhat evident, it's been operating for fourteen years with, with no complaints until recently. Fourteen years without having parking issues or traffic issues or traffic accidents, noise issues, light issues, concerns with fire safety issues. So, so there's been a track record, and that's unusual. When we come to you for a use variance, you typically don't have that operation already occurring. But we do have evidence and we have empirical data that, that we can say to you that the site already accommodates this without any potential issues. And we'll talk about the negative criteria in a second. But, but really, it's operating as is, and the, the site adequately accommodates the use as we talk about today.
You factored so on a larger scale, according to Ms. Mick's testimony, until?
Until recently. That's true. I think the other thing that's very interesting about this parcel as it relates to the R4 district is it's an oversized lot. It's ten thousand square foot lot. Six thousand square feet is, is required. So it's about sixty percent larger than the lots that are permitted within this, within this district. Why does that matter? Why does an oversized lot matter? Well, for several reasons. One is that it allows for more space, more parking, more outdoor activity, greater setbacks, more green space. So as you add more people to a site, it can, it accommodates that, that, those people, meaning it accommodates the parking. There is parking available. It accommodates any outdoor activity without necessarily nuisance impacts onto the surrounding neighbors. All of these factors, and, and I guess one of the things I wanted to make sure that you are aware of, with that oversized lot, that oversized lot also allows for more frontage, which allows for more parking, as well as area for drop-off and pickup. So your ordinance requires a sixty-foot frontage or sixty-foot building width. This has a hundred feet of building, sorry, of lot width along Apseken Road. Again, about forty more feet that allows for parking and drop-off. So I, I think those are all reasons why this lot can certainly be indicated as such that it is particularly suitable for the, for the existing use and what we're asking for approval for. I think the other very interesting part about this lot is, as I mentioned, it's very close to the lake. This is art instruction, and so inspiration for art is always very important. Having a lot that has a view of this amazing aesthetic that you, that you are able to see as a student, I think makes it very particularly interesting and suitable for what specifically we're talking about tonight, and that's art instruction. So that's really, when, when we talk about meeting the, the general welfare, I would submit to you that this lot is particularly well-suited for the art instruction. There are two other reasons in municipal land use law. When we provide special reasons, we only have to look at one purpose of zoning. I'm going to submit to you that there are two other purposes of zonings that are enhanced or at least met by this, by this application. This is purpose G in municipal land use law, and it's to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. And that could be residential, agricultural, commercial, open space, public and private. And it's to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. So not just the community, but all New Jersey citizens. We're going to concentrate, obviously, on, on her students and the, the community that she's serving currently. But this is a private commercial entity, as was indicated. It's providing a cultural need of art education. And given her success over the past fourteen years, not discounting what's happened in the last couple with the pandemic, it's clear that the community is supporting the need of this art education or art instruction, I, I would say, in a better way. So that, that meets purpose G. And then the other purpose is purpose M. And that's to encourage coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development and to be, and really, this is the key, to have more efficient use of land. This basically means we're looking at using existing infrastructure, existing buildings for the location of an art studio as well as those classes in a residential home. That's an example of the use of efficient land. Why is that? There's no need to build. There's no need to build elsewhere, as this is adequate spaces, I already testified to, that this, this home exists and is particularly suitable for the, the use of it, as, use of it for lessons. And it, it actually lessens the cost of development, not only to the business owner. She doesn't have to go and lease a space and open up somewhere else and, and have the costs that are associated with that. But there's less of an impact to the community itself where you don't see additional development, site development for a use like that. So in my opinion, I would submit to all of you that the positive criteria is certainly met. The general welfare, this is a, a lot that is particularly suitable for the use. The second prong, or the second item, is the negative criteria. And as all you know and have heard probably many, many times, is that that the two prongs of negative criteria include that there's no substantial detriment to the public good, meaning the surrounding neighborhood, and there's no impairment of your zone plan. So I'm going to start with the negative criteria as it relates to the surrounding neighborhood, because I know that those are concerns from the board members. So first, no substantial detriment to the surrounding neighborhood, as I kind of hinted to, is that we're talking about four classes a week. So, you know, little traffic coming through this, this, this property as well as the street. At most, we have eight kids getting dropped off and picked up. There's been no issues with traffic as far as safety is concerned. I almost equate this to having a single-family home and having a bunch of kids over to, to play on a Saturday morning, where you're dropping off, and it could be a birthday party or it could just be getting together as, as a bunch of kids. And whether they get dropped off, ride a bike, or walk, that's essentially what you're dealing with as it relates to intensity of the type of use that's happening here. Most of the time, these kids and, and adults are inside a building, so you're not necessarily going to hear them. So no, no noise that would go outside the realm of what you would normally hear in a residential neighborhood. No additional light. These are during the day, so we're not having additional light intrusion on, onto other properties. No dust, no, no offensive smells. As was indicated, most of the operations are within the building. No waste that would be beyond what you normally see for residential property, no signage. And then I think as it relates to the safety issue that's already been brought up, the mitigation of that is complying or stipulating to the fact that we would get a business license if necessary. We would get a fire review and fire safety to come in and, and make sure that we are on the up and up with whatever fire, fire safety code items that we, that we would need to provide. So as it relates to your negative criteria and substantial detriment to the surrounding properties, I would submit to you that there is not a substantial detriment. And that if there is a concern, meaning that if there is a detriment or a nuisance that you potentially see, I think we can indicate that we've mitigated that substant, in, in a way that you cannot find that it's a substantial detriment. Finally, as it relates to the no substantial impairment of your purpose of your zone plan and ordinance, basically, that, that really just looks at your master plan. What does your master plan say about having businesses in a residential district? What, what, is there some guidance that you all can, can take a look at? And there are several key goals and, and strategies that the, I think that we can point to to say, we are not impairing your zone plan. We are not impairing your master plan. We're actually, we're actually following it. We are in compliance with it, and we're actually, I think, and you'll hear me in a second talk about it, but I think we're actually doing exactly what it's asking some of the residents to do in this particular case. So there are several goals, and if you just, just humor me for a second, I'm going to read them. There's only three, so I'm not going, I'm not going to take too much of your time. The first is to preserve and protect the character, the density and the aesthetics of the township's established and stable residential neighborhoods by restricting incompatible uses, which basically means limiting non-residential development. Well, then you're saying, well, Kendra, why are we, you know, you just said something completely opposite. Well, it's to protect prevailing residential development patterns while ensuring residents can enhance their properties and adapt to modern preferences. What I'm suggesting is that the art classes, while they are non-residential, do not change the character of this, of this neighborhood. They, they do not change the aesthetics of this residential neighborhood. There is really no difference whether she's holding art classes right now or not holding art classes as it relates to what this residential district looks like and feels like. So I believe that we meet that particular master plan goal. A second is to preserve and enhance the township's retail, commercial, corporate, research, and professional office areas by implementing land use strategies that respond to the modern market and real estate trends. It also suggests that you consider creative alternatives as appropriate, including reusing and repurposing the existing building stock in the overall context of the township land use plan, uh, goals, sorry, planning goals. The use of this space, as I had, have indicated, within the existing residence for commercial activity furthers this goal. We are using existing building stock, and we do not need to provide, find another site for, for this, this very minimal type of use, meaning not, not so many people coming to the, the property. And I think this last one is a key one, and we, we hit it on the head. And this is to nurture the township's diverse cultures to establish a unique community identity that supports and strengthens the historical, the arts, and the cultural resources. The art programs support this goal for sure. And it's a resource that strengthens a focus on arts as a valued amenity that supports the community identity. There are very specific strategies that your master plan puts forth as to how you meet this goal. First, it, it indicates that it's recognized that there is a community benefit when the community comes together and promoting art. And, and the second part of that strategy is specifically to cultivate the artist community, support and nurture existing organizations that promote the development of the township's artist community. This couldn't be any more on point as, as this particular application relates to that, that strategy. Ms. Mick is providing this, this very strategy already within her home. In addition, the strategy states that the township should support allowing land uses. This is important. The strategy states that the township should support allowing land uses that serve the artist community, such as a live-work artist loft and gallery. There are specific objectives in your master plan that support exactly what Ms. Mick is currently doing. So I, I would submit to you that we meet the positive and the negative criteria. The existing residence is well-suited for the use, and we submit that we've successfully met the positive and negative criteria by indicating that there is no impact to the surrounding community, nor any impairment of your zone plan. If you have to answer any questions.
Ms. Leelie, let me ask you a question. In light of the well-publicized decrease in funds, public schools for arts of various types, this kind of musical arts and so forth, not only in our county and in our state, but nationwide, from a planning perspective, do you believe that this alternative to those programs that are in dire straits these days helps satisfy those goals that you've spoken about?
Absolutely.
Nothing further?
Do you know the hours of operation? How, how long is a class?
I think Ms. Mick indicated that the kids' classes are an hour and the adult classes are two hours.
The, you, you referred to the parking and traffic. You referred to little traffic. How do you define that?
I think something that's not out of the ordinary of what you would normally see in a residential community.
So if I'm understanding this correctly and calculating this correctly, you have on Saturday, three classes of eight children each for one hour.
Correct.
Parents do not stay.
Correct.
So that's roughly two trips generated per kid. I'm just going to assume for argument's sakes, eight kids, there are no siblings, they're eight different cars. That's sixteen trips times three on Saturdays. How many houses are on that street? It's a relatively short street, right?
Yeah, there's probably dozen, half, eight to dozen, I would say.
Handful, short, short dead-end street. So sixteen times three, forty?
Forty trips, yeah.
Yeah, forty-eight.
Now.
Forty-eight trips on a little street in a three-hour period. You consider that little? I know you're not a traffic expert.
I, I am not. So you're going to put me in a position where I'm not going to necessarily? indicate that.
Understood. But I, I think- But I think you know where I'm going with that.
I do. I also, I also think you have to look at the community, too. This is, this is not, um, certainly on a, on a highway, so the ability to walk and bike to, and I don't know what the, the percentages are, and we probably can get them for you, um, is probably much higher than if it was on a, a larger arterial road.
Agreed, yep.
So, so I think to some extent, um, you know, the, that would be worst-case scenario of those, those number of trips.
Which is what we would want to-
You would want to look at, yep. I, I, again, we're going to go on the benefit of the fact that we have an existing use that we can look at, so we don't have to pontificate about what potentially could happen. We know what, that's happening currently, and, um, that traffic has not created an issue. I, I, from my understanding, and I, and I didn't do any research on this, so maybe it's something, um, but from my, what I know, and my conversation with the applicant, with Ms. Nick, is that there hasn't been any traffic accidents or issues as it relates to safety.
Neither now or in the past when it was far greater volume, and we deal, so your worst-case scenario back then was a lot more trips than it is now.
Understood. And I'm, I'm, probably should ask this of Ms. Nick, but do you have a sense of how, you know, she was at a much higher number of classes, she's looking to reduce? Is she looking, do you know if there's a, is this the cap? The four and the, the three and the one?
I believe that was her testimony. I have no objection to bringing her back to answer that question.
That was her testimony.
Okay, thank you.
And I think we've said we stipulate, stipulate to the fact that we would, um, have that as a condition, that it would not.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? Questions? Uh, hearing none, seeing none.
I have no further witnesses.
Yeah, I, uh, John brought up the point about, I mean, there's, there's obviously going to be materials that are going to be flammable as part of the destruction. And I think it's everybody's benefit to find out what the fire marshal would say, if anything, as to what the story-
We don't have an objection to that. Uh, I don't know if there's a mechanism.
I don't care, I don't think you can get this can down the road. I think you need to know what he's going to say for this board action.
Or what, what things are going to have to be done to make it valuable to us, if, if something, if he comes up with something.
I, I think it's a fair comment to see if the fire official has any comments. It's a fair request of us to investigate to the best we can whether there are any licensure issues that are triggered here. Um, and that's certainly something we can look into. As a practical matter, I would, uh, the board has adult-
The township does not have a mercantile type of license. It's, it doesn't, it's not like South Jersey. So, she would, if she's approved, she'll get a different assessment class. Uh, she'll have a commercial assessment and residential assessment. But I, we're way off, that has nothing to do with-
It's, yes, it's beyond the purview of this board, and I, I can't even comment on it as far as what tax-
I think we need to know that fire is not an issue, or if it is, it can be corrected.
So are we in agreement that we'll carry this case until we have a chance to have a fire inspector review the property?
Uh, I don't have any objection to that. Um, we will bring Ms. Nick back if it determines if there are any further witnesses, uh, as long as we have the opportunity to present those. I don't know that that would be the case, but-
I don't think you're going to need to bring back your planner.
No, I don't.
I think she, she was very, very, very complete presentation. I commend her.
Do you need any?
Hmm? Not until they finish the testimony.
Right.
Um, Nora, when can we carry this case to?
December 6th.
When?
December 6th.
Like in December?
Like in December. You know, if you think this can be done and finished up in half an hour, you can do a special October 18th, but I have nothing before.
You're not going to have any more witnesses, so what we're going to do is have the fire review.
Let me throw a, why don't you ask how many people out there want to testify?
That's a very good point, Bonnie. That's why I keep you up here, because you're so- Now, if we carry this case to a special meeting on October 16th, it will be a thirty-minute meeting, which means we have to accomplish all that we're supposed to do in thirty minutes. My question, and it appears that there's a number of members of the public here for this application. If you plan on speaking either in a favor of or, um, not in favor of, then that's going to extend our time. So I'm just trying to get a feel. There's one gentleman over here that wants to speak. Is there anybody else that's going to need to speak about this application? Two, three, four?
I guess we're going to go to-
How many are here for the application, gentlemen?
I think all these people are here for that.
Are all these people?
Yeah, they're all here.
No?
Can you ask how many are against or?
No, but all you people are here because of this application. There's like twenty, or more than twenty of them.
Can you ask how many are against or?
I don't want to know that.
Okay.
I don't think we're going to be able to do it in thirty minutes, that's for sure.
Well, you're only a few who want to speak.
Hmm? There was six hands raised to speak. Yeah. Um, December 6th.
Okay. Long as your zoning officer is okay with it, we're okay with it.
You give us an extension through the end of the year?
Absolutely.
Motion to carry this case to December 6th without further notice and with whatever extensions are required through December 31st.
So moved.
Second, and any discussion, hold in favor? Anyone opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, if you're here for this case, it's going to be carried to December 6th at 7:30 PM.
And that meeting is here at this location.
Right here, yep. Unless, unless you come back with two hundred and fifty people, none of that a problem.
Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful evening.
We'll have the fire inspector here then.
Hmm?
We'll have the fire inspector here.
Hopefully. Yeah, don't be- Very, very, excuse me, very nice presentation, very nice presentation. Thank you. Well, yeah.
December 6th.
That's not bad.
That's just, and this will see you later.
Yes.
What's your?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I never had more than one client there.
Whatever it happened here.
I saw it out. It's been some sort of one for you. See, maybe twelve, fifteen people in-
Two applications have same, same-
Then I don't take-
Two for one?
I don't, public side of the, in Greenberg, because I don't have somebody-
You got twenty.
They used to live up here, now they live down Oshie County or Monmouth County, or even some of them. And they don't feel like driving over them. Yeah. But that location. Yeah. Good evening, Mr. O'Neill.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph O'Neill here on behalf of the applicants for the next two applications. Get your votes, Dunkin' Donuts location.
What are we doing first?
You speak, Jack.
I believe, uh, twenty-three oh eight is the North Beverlywood Road.
Okay.
Proposal, we should probably do that one.
Okay.
And so with that, I'd like to call Mr. Reno Santos, who is the principal operator of the proposed Dunkin' Donuts. It's my name, right?
Sir, raise your right hand. You swore firm testimony about to give for the boards to yourself you got. And you're the owner of the, um, subject property, are you the owner of the subject properties or you're just going to rent them?
Just a bit.
Okay, so you have, um, authorization from the owners of the property to bank these applications. All right, you're sworn, just please have a seat and speak into the microphone.
So, Mr. Santos, you actually operate on North Beverlywood Road, the existing Dunkin' Donuts in the next-door shopping center, is that right?
That is correct.
So you're moving out of that location into what was formerly the TD Bank. You're going to have a Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-thru now to utilize the bank's drive.
That is correct.
And you're also going to put in, uh, some complimentary convenience store items.
That is correct.
Why don't you just describe for us very quickly what is your proposal there in that building?
Normally, we put convenience stores and gas stations where you see the Dunkin' Donuts. Because the TD Bank was bigger than what I need for Dunkin', it seemed like a waste of space to leave, you know, fifteen hundred square feet. So, uh, what we do is we usually put a, uh, another business, like a convenience store where it complements, uh, the neighborhood and our business, uh, by doing half of it with Dunkin', with some seating, and a convenience store, obviously with no seating, and we split the, uh, the cost amongst the two businesses to pay it easier.
Now, the convenience store doesn't make sandwiches or anything like that, it's just packaged goods and soft drinks and things like that?
Some conveniences do. I do not, only because, um, it's two businesses under one roof, and we try to avoid competition, so we use packaged food, just like beverages, and packaged, uh, chips and, uh, H and M.
So, uh, each business is going to operate, it'll be five AM to ten PM every day?
That's, that's correct.
You're going to have a maximum of five to six employees probably during the morning rush in this location?
That is correct.
How does that split up between the two of them?
Usually, convenience store, it's pretty much one person for the convenience side, and the remainder of the five or six would be for the Dunkin' side.
So the donuts are cooked off-site and delivered?
Uh, any fried, baked products, which is basically, uh, donuts, would be, uh, done off-site and then shipped in the other.
Now, I mentioned that you're operating a Dunkin' Donuts there already on North Beverlywood Road, so you're receiving, uh, shipments. How do those shipments come in now? And will it be the same?
Right now, uh, it's done overnight. I'm assuming they use the existing parking front to do the receiving. The new site would actually be better because it'd still be done overnight, but it would be mostly to the, uh, left of the property if you're facing the property, so they wouldn't necessarily be blocking any parking. But it doesn't really make a difference because it's usually done after we close for business, so there is no traffic on-site.
After this proposal, you're suggesting that, uh, the lighting be turned off, turned on, well, turned on an hour before you open, turned off an hour after you-
Yeah, an hour after you close?
Yeah, normally, for safety precautions, we usually do somewhere like a half hour to an hour before we open for business, and about a half hour after we close for business, so that whoever's there cleaning up or finishing up has sufficient time to exit the building, uh, building with the lighting.
What time would that be, Mr.?
Uh, ten o'clock is, uh, close of business, so the light would stay on until ten thirty.
Who are opening?
Open, five AM, so the first light would come in, come on at four o'clock.
And how do you, how do you propose handing refuse here?
Uh, trash?
Yeah.
Uh, right now, I'm proposing the garbage to be in the far-left corner of the parcel, um, for two reasons. One, it gives the optimum circulation for the vehicle, uh, picking up the trash on, on-site without, uh, compromising flow of traffic. And the exit, the connection of the property, that's the same circulation, uh, counterclockwise. Whereas right now, the plaza, uh, if you recall, the trash is actually in front of the plaza, and when the trash comes in, they're actually obstructing the parking at the existing location. So this is actually a plus over the existing location.
And-
Normally, for the projected, uh, sales, they would say twice a week for trash, and normally type board is once a week.
I have no further questions for this witness.
The light going on at four in the morning, uh, you're not close enough to any residential where that would bother anybody?
Right now, if you're facing the building to the right, you have the existing plaza.
Yeah.
To the rear, there's a huge, uh-
Space?
Uh, greenery.
Yeah.
I'll call it grass, whatever, vegetation.
Yeah.
Back south to Lake Hyawatha.
Yeah.
And to the left is the only, uh, residential area to, uh, work. So, um, as far as lighting goes, we're not adding any exterior lighting, so whatever's there-
Okay.
We're not adding any additional lighting.
Okay. So the brightness of that, there's houses across the street, or is there still, is that the, the road?
Shopping center across the street.
Directly across to the shopping center, it's not, I thought there was houses, one or two houses straight in front.
Let's wait for that.
Alright.
There's a lot of mature landscaping on this site, that's not going to be taken away right now, stay there.
Uh, the front of the landscaping is not going to change, the two sides are not going to change dramatically. The only area that's going to change a little bit is landscaping to the right of the building. Because what we usually do is we put, uh, two lanes. The one lane will be the, let's call it, the typical, uh, menu order, uh, ordering. You go to the menu and you place the order. And we have a second lane where if, uh, technology now, we have mobile ordering. So if you place your order on mobile, you don't have to wait in queue. You can go to the second lane, go straight to the, uh, window upon the merge, and pick up your order without stopping. And then we have a third lane, which is bypass, in case there's an emergency and you need to circulate the surrounding perimeter, you can use the third lane as bypass. So we'll be eliminating, the only landscaping that would be eliminated would be to the right of the building directly, and a little bit to the rear of the building to make the curving inside, uh, and menu boards, things of that nature, would have been placed.
So the, the fire chief asked about that third lane specifically and requested that it's, uh, you write "do not park" or something similar, are you allowed to do that?
We have no problem. If you wanted to, no parking or fire, which is typical, we don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Uh, will there be separate entrances for the convenience store and the Dunkin' Donuts, or will it be open to go between?
Uh, we'll have some plans for you to better describe, but I can verbally tell you, there'll be one entrance. As you come in, you'll see the counter for Dunkin' on the far left. Directly in front, it will be a small section of counter for the convenience store register. And the typical seating that you see in a, a TD Bank, that would be your refrigerators and your shelving for your products.
And Dunkin' has no restrictions on you having a convenience store and a Dunkin' in the same roof, under the same roof?
No, the only thing, uh-
Can't sell donuts?
I can't compete against myself, which, as a business owner, I'm sure you'd agree, if you were a business owner, you wouldn't want to compete or get yourself, for example.
Do you own the one right here, tip?
I own four, personally.
The one right here on Cherry Hill?
Littleton Road?
The gas station?
The gas station right here.
The BP gas station?
Not the BP.
Forty-six and Cherry Road.
Or down here on the right.
I'm guessing not.
No, no.
Just past the whole thing. He's saying, he says yes.
It's the same setup.
That guy said yes.
Okay. Okay, it's the exact same setup. You walk in, there's the counter, the convenience store, just for context, if anyone's been in that one.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't get you now. Um, and then you're just basically retrofitting the current building, you're not tearing it down?
The foot, uh, the foot, the foot of the building is staying the same. The only thing that we're taking away is, right now, the TD Bank has a three-stall canopy on the drive-thru. Obviously, we don't need a three-stall canopy, so we're removing the, uh, the canopy itself and it's putting a, uh, like a lade, uh, roof over the drive-through window to show-
Keep the water, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
That's all.
Any questions? I don't see any. What's that? I'm sorry. Can't think of any. Any members of the public have any questions of this witness? I don't think there are members of the public here, so.
No, no.
Next witness?
Hi. Thank you.
Sir, raise your right hand. You swore firm testimony about to give for the boards to yourself you got.
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Sure, my name is John Corak, last name spelled C-O-R-A-K.
I'm Ruse.
I'm sorry.
Can't think of any.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness? I don't think there are members of the public here, so.
No.
Next witness?
Hi. Sir, raise your right hand. You swore a firm testimony, you're about to give it for the boards yourself, you got?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Sure, my name is John Corak, last name spelled C.O.R.A.K.
And you are the?
I am the engineer and traffic engineer.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Correct.
And you've been sworn in for this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Not this board, but other boards throughout the state.
Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn in and qualified.
Thank you. Mr. Corak, could you walk us through what we're proposing here as was mentioned by Mr. Santos? We're not tearing the building down, but we are doing some site monitoring.
That's correct. I'm going to, for, I'll be brief with this first exhibit. This is an aerial exhibit of the subject property was prepared by our office with the date of August eighth, twenty twenty-three. And just for some clarification, because the site is so much consistent with the existing condition.
So you're just part of the upper one?
So aerial exhibit, prepared by Stonefield dated eight-eight, twenty twenty-three. The typical TD Bank site layout, a site that's designed for drive-through use. We see strong greenery buffering on the left side or the south side of the property. We have the strong landscape buffering again in the rear of the property of elementary school behind that. And then as we move into the plan itself.
What's across the street? I can't see.
I'm sorry.
Is it houses?
Across the street is houses in this area, right? We're at the southern.
I'm staying correct.
Yeah, we're at the southern end of the BT zone, so we are surrounded by the residential zones, the strong buffering provided in the existing condition on the site that will continue to be provided in the future condition. So as we move onto the site plan itself, you see the very similar layout to traditional bank layout, which is generally speaking, consistent with drive-through layouts as a whole, right? Need to provide the circulation for those vehicles coming around the site. Two-way circulation in the front and then one-way counterclockwise circulation around the other three sides of the building. Maintaining the existing residential buffers, we have thick evergreen screening, we have a four-on-four fence, which is on the site itself. We have over a hundred feet of screening between the lot line and the first, you know, the curb line, the rear curb line of the back of the site. As far as site improvements goes, previous testified about the removal of the canopy, we're able to reconfigure some of that space since we only need one lane of drive-through at that pickup point. And then for the north side of the building, the right, north side of the site, right side of the building, we do widen that out to provide the two drive-through lanes. The left lane being your typical or traditional drive-up lane where you order at a menu board. The right lane, the outside lane, is a, basically pull-up for Dunkin' Go customers. Those who've ordered in the app can essentially somewhat shortcut the line, they pull up to that second order box, tell them that, basically tell them their name and then continue on. So efficient system for processing the queue associated with the project. Making sure that I cover a few of the other configurations here. Lighting on the site, so there's existing site lighting, it's all downward oriented, traditional, you know, bank-style lighting that TD Bank typically features maintaining that. Utilities to the site are all currently provided, would be maintained. Stormwater to the site, currently it flows, generally speaking, toward the, toward the west and north. Away from Beverlywick Road, there's a series of inlets along the exterior of the property and we continue to capture stormwater in those inlets and discharge appropriately. Overall, from a zoning perspective, bulk requirements, there are no changes to the existing setbacks. We have a very small reduction in impervious coverage, point four percent. So as we reconfigure some of the drive-up lanes, we're actually able to reduce the total amount of impervious coverage, so a minor benefit there is a point four percent reduction. And then with, you know, building coverage, impervious coverage, all of those items are compliant, the existing condition would remain compliant today.
Are we gonna have any E.V. spaces made ready, available?
Right, we are required to have one E.V. space. We would likely locate that along the, in the rear of the site with the five supposed parking spaces. Dunkin' and convenience stores, they're high turnover uses, not typical for a larger or longer period of stay with an E.V., so we want to locate that where perhaps it'd be an employee or a manager who has an electric vehicle or just out of the way of your high turnover parking spaces in front of the site.
So there was a question brought up by Mr. Holloway. His report concerning cross-access with the existing shopping center, basically where our common client is leaving, we could go to this thing. We do not feel that is necessary for emergency situation?
No, I think that the, you know, speak to an emergency situation, we do have wide driveway, the additional cross-access, I don't think would add any substantial benefit in that regard. It would impact parking on their side of the street, on their side of the property as far as being able to provide that cross-access. And ultimately, we don't think, especially with one tenant leaving to go next door, that that's going to be something that's gonna be feasible in the near future.
By way of history, there was an attempt a number of years ago to put a intersection in with the street across, that's right alongside Food Town, and Heller would not agree to connecting the three lots so that they could have a traffic light and have access from all those. So I didn't go anywhere, I guarantee you that.
And the last question Mr. Holloway brought up was about, do we need any spaces for people awaiting their orders? You've had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Santos about that.
Yeah, for this site layout in particular, right, we've seen this on a number of other sites where when there's, when there's not a good way of recirculate the site or where the site is very compact, you make designated spaces where if you have a large order and the Dunkin' can't repair it and the speed that they like, you'll service the rest of their customers, they would have them park in designated spaces. In this case, the ability to recirculate the site, essentially come back up to that Dunkin' Go order window and, and tell them, hey, I was the customer that you had recirculate the site, that will cover that need for the site itself. We don't, we don't feel that it's necessary based on this particular site layout to have those specific spaces that could.
I have no further, oh, actually I do, I'm sorry. The rest of the comments by Mr. Holloway, we have no problem addressing those.
And no problem addressing those, number of things related to details and custom cosmetic things in compliance.
Regarding the traffic study, did you provide it to the board? Mr. Chadwick had a question about accidents. Do you have anything to add on that regard?
Yeah, the, so we did provide a traffic study to the board, we did see the comment about accidents. We did review the state's accident database system that's available to consultants, both from the reviewing side and the applicant side. Along the frontage, we looked at it from twenty sixteen through twenty twenty when the TD Bank was open. Over that five-year period, there were total five accidents, so about one a year, wouldn't consider that to be a high accident rate and we wouldn't expect, you know, that to be exacerbated with this development. There's, there's good lines of sight at the driveway itself, you're able to see clearly in both directions and I wouldn't anticipate, you know, an increase in accident rate associated with this project.
If I could, I have a question just on the striping, pavement markings and signage. I see that there is a "do not enter" when you come into the site. Are you gonna have additional signage or might be additional pavement markings that kind of make people go to the right?
Yeah, so, so out there today, there is that striped bar and there are "do not enter" signs. In the existing condition, those would be maintained. If, if necessary, we could add a directional arrow, a right turn arrow.
Yeah, I would, the "do not enter" or something.
Yeah, we, we certainly re-stripe that to, to hold them that, and "do not enter" striping and we can, we can provide something to very cleanly delineate that.
So from the standpoint you were saying about the accidents, I realize that one a year is not a big deal. I don't think, I think the Dunkin' will have more, more consistent traffic than the bank, of course, and later into the night. Was there any thought about maybe putting an entrance on the right side and the exit on the left side? Just?
As far as a split?
Yeah, enter on this side, exit on that side if you're going around? Because I don't know about anybody else, but if you try to leave the Food Town and make a left to go towards forty-six, you could be there forever. And my other thought would be, would we consider maybe a right turn only out of the Dunkin' parking lot, so you're not crossing over North Beverlywick and going back towards the Food Town? Because if you go rush hour over there, again, you're gonna be sitting there for a while. Just a thought, I don't.
Two?
No, there's a traffic light there, you just wait for the traffic light to change.
There's no light there?
Well, no. Vale and Beverlywick.
Yeah.
So traffic stops, that gives you the opening to make a turn. I spent, I spent thousands of hours on that street and.
Trying to make a right turn.
No, for the most, yeah. No, for the most part during the day, you can easily make lefts and rights out of all those parking lots.
Yeah.
Forget rush hour. I mean, I was down on Beverlywick Road yesterday at rush hour and there must have been forty cars backed up for the light at Lake Shore Drive.
Right.
In the morning, you have a lot of people that are, that are going past, going south on Beverlywick Road. But my bet is that ninety percent of the people in the morning that are going to this Dunkin' Donuts are gonna make a right.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not going left because they're going to work. And work is not on Beverlywick Road.
Agreed.
So.
The other thing I wouldn't want to do is prohibit cars from going left into downtown there. They may want to frequent those businesses.
Yes.
You don't want to prevent people from getting to those small businesses.
It's, it's just care. I mean, you have, sometimes you have to wait, there's nothing you can do. A lot of mornings when I, a lot of times when I used to pull out of my parking lot is I, if I saw that I was never gonna go make a left, I'd make a right, go down to Grand Union, spin around and then, and then go that way.
Yep.
So, but it's, it's very.
Grand Union?
Hmm? Did I say Grand Union?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'd say Lidl pretty soon.
I think that's about as good as I could answer the left turn question. I'll, I'll entertain the, the splitting of the driveways, we're looking on the right side. The, the one reason that I wouldn't recommend that here is that if a motorist comes in and wants to go to the parking area and they think they're going to get a spot and that spot is taken, right? Say it's an SUV and then there's a, a small car behind it, they're either going to be backing up in the aisle to determine where to go or they need to recirculate on the roadway.
Right, right.
In the current configuration, you're able, you know, it's like a, like a roundabout, you could, you could go around in circles forever if you really wanted.
Right, I guess my thought, my thought on it was entering and exit the same spot possible with the amount of traffic going in, somebody not paying attention, making a too wide turn into the right.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a great thought.
My concern with that is the plaza has an entrance on one side, exit on the other side. By doing the second curb cut, it will bring.
Right next to each other. Yep, very good point, good point.
It's another consideration there. There's, on the north side of the building is the gas meter, which is effectively in, you know, right up against the drive-through lane. Are you either gonna move it or put bollards around it? We'll, we'll, we will either move it or protect it.
Okay.
We'll, we'll make sure that that, we did see that comment from the, from the fire department, we'll, we'll make sure that, that that area is protected accordingly.
The landscaping you're gonna remove, do you have another question, anyone down there?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, sorry, I'll wait.
Okay, I might just, I think for the record, if you could just give us an indication of what you anticipate the queue to be and how you're gonna handle it and.
Yeah, typical queue for, for a modern Dunkin' operation during those peak periods, at the higher end, I call it eight to nine vehicles. This site can easily stack twelve to sixteen within that striped dedicated drive-through area, let alone the space in front of the parking space itself. So queue management on this site, because it is, I would say, a larger site than a traditional Dunkin', right? That's why we do have the convenience store component to it, we're, we're gonna be able to accommodate that drive-through queue very easily.
Can you just throw it should be on our record?
Any other questions?
Nope.
John, you have a question?
No, I'm sorry.
Nope, no.
Just the landscaping that you're gonna remove, are we gonna put anything back?
Yeah, the, so the landscaping on the north side is removed for that drive aisle, but with the reconfiguration of the drive aisle and parking areas on the south side, that, that opens up an opportunity for dedicated landscaping.
Did you show it on the plan?
It's shown as green space, it hasn't, there hasn't been a dedicated landscaping.
There wasn't any landscaping proposal, right?
Right, there hasn't been a dedicated landscaping plan, but the, the net change in impervious coverage.
Will need something on the plan.
We'd be happy to provide.
So lead landscape plan or?
To revise landscaping plan, I guess, which will address the, which side, is that the west side?
This, the left side of the page is the south side.
South side of the property.
Nope.
Any members of the public have any questions?
Nope.
Signs are gonna be dealt by John.
I'll show you a whole plan of signage.
I need coffee.
Thank you.
Why you have Dunkin' now?
Circuits, raise your right hand. You swore a firm testimony, you're about to give it for boards yourself, you got?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
My name is Michael Elkinn, E.L.K.I.N. I work for G K N A Architects. We've had the plan, the architectural plan.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes.
You've been sworn before this board and other boards in the state of New Jersey. Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn in and qualified.
So Mr. Elkinn, we've covered a lot of ground here so far, why don't we just tie it in the bow with the show and the board, this floor plan you came up with. But let's go through that quickly so we can get to the signage.
Yes, the floor plan as was discussed previously, at the front of the building in the center is the entrance. You come in the front, to the right is the convenience store directly in front of you with the registers with the convenience store on the right. You can see the shelving, the refrigeration. To the left is a Dunkin' Donuts. There'll be approximately fourteen seats in the front. The service area, like you're normally when you go up to the counter, and the whole back is basically the back end of the Dunkin' Donuts. There's storage, the back corner, there's some storage here in the Dunkin' and the bathroom facilities are behind the coolers for the, for the convenience store. So you just can see anybody walking in, go either way, then go both ways, it's, it's wide open.
So the only restroom there is?
Yeah, two, two bathrooms.
That's for customer use as well?
Excuse me?
For customer use, that's?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the front elevation and the left side elevation, which will have the drive-up window. The only real changes to the front, there'll be new storefronts for the stores and the existing glazing that you see on top is existing, that will remain. The signage, there'll be a sign for the convenience store on the right side at the top, there'll be a sign for Dunkin' and on the right side is the new logo-type signage for the drive-through, which just says "drive-through" and has a cup. The plan you have in front of you have the old signage, this is the brand-new signage that we see from Dunkin'. The signage on.
You're gonna have to mark that as.
Yeah.
You gotta mark that as.
The signage itself is actually, from what you see on your plans, is a little bit smaller. The Dunkin' sign has been condensed, it's different, slightly different graphics. The drive-through sign is a lot smaller than what you see on yours. In fact, I think it's a big improvement. There is a monument sign out front, that'll be, the Dunkin' sign will be placed there.
Is that a new color?
The colors, yeah, the color, that was, I'm glad you brought that up. The other change, the colors are slightly different than the previous Dunkin' colors. A little bit more muted, believe it or not, but they're generally the same range, just a little bit different.
That just going in place of the TD Bank sign that's there now?
Yes, correct. It's just the form of the signs, you can see the colors, it's the orange and I don't know, I guess that's a purple color. They have gotten rid of the, what they used to use was a D.D. logo. The logo is now a coffee cup with a D in it.
Sort of a similar size of the D.D. logo. Is it a similar such, similar size of the sign there?
Yes.
All right, why don't you mark that as A3 and I don't think I have any more questions.
No.
Okay.
Do you want to mark those last two as A3?
Well, this has got the color scheme of it, so.
Yeah, basically, the one before it, mark as A.
I, you can mark.
A2.
The whole package.
Yeah.
The package is A2.
All right, the whole package. Finally, there's just the drive-up through. Finally, there's just, uh, the drive-up through Highgate, again, used to be a DD in the center, which I believe is what's on yours. It's changed, a little car. It's another part of their upgrade of the signage and they're a little, uh, small directional And.
All right.
And that's basically it.
Thank you.
Great.
No further questions?
No.
So, there are, there are sign variances required?
Yes, there are.
Not precise. Deminimus?
They, it's deminimus, John will go through it very quickly.
Okay.
We got, we got.
Yeah. Any other questions? Members of the public, no questions?
Sir, raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony about giving a report to yourself, you got?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name?
Sure, hi everyone, John McDonough, M.C., capital D-O-N, O-G-H, project planner.
In effect, then you can qualify.
Yes.
Justified before this board and other boards and state your truth.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn and qualified.
I'll be very brief. We're gonna let the pictures through the talking here. This is a site that has excellent suitability to accommodate the development that's before you for two main reasons. Number one, this is.
A3.
Up to the record, you, what's being passed out is A3, it's going to be a four-page exhibit. These are recent aerial drone photographs of the subject property and they just reinforce from a bird's eye, what you saw in John's aerial, uh, that this site has excellent, um, I'll say verticality in terms of the buffering on the sides of it, particularly on the residential side, and that's, uh, kudos to good planning on the town side. You can see particularly in the second page of A3, the buffering that separates the subject site from the residential neighbor. Uh, we are right on the edge of a residential zone. We now have established here evergreen trees that are in full leaf year-round, top to bottom, all the way down to the ground, there's no, um, loss of vegetation at the bottom of those trees. They're a good forty, fifty feet tall, uh, so they serve as a nice green wall from the subject property, separating it from the residential use that's adjacent. And what's important here on this particular piece of property are there are a lot of things that could go here. This is certainly not going to be more intense than what could be, including any flavor of retail store, retail shops, restaurants, a brew pub could go here, that artist instruction that you just heard about could go here as well, uh, offices. And then, of course, you've got permitted conditional uses, including the auto service station, a kennel could go here, the banks with drive-through are permitted conditional use. That's what we've got. We've got a building with a drive-through that's already there. This is a very easy fit-up, uh, so the D1 is justified by virtue of the site condition, the site context, we're in a mixed area. Um, we do have interrelated D1 relief to have two uses in one building, this co-branding concept. We've seen Dunkin' pair up with Baskin-Robbins, the ice cream, um, and not atypical as well to see Dunkin', think about a, a gas station with a convenience aspect as well. So, this co-branding is, is common and typical and not something that would cause any substantially adverse impacts to the site or to the surrounding neighborhood. Those are the two D1s, I think the board can certainly move favorable on site suitability on special reasons that this is going to provide and promote the general welfare with a service use or actually service uses on a service corridor. It's gonna promote efficient land use, variety of land uses and a positive aesthetic, a nice name brand there is what's really the gateway to your downtown on Bevrick. The master plan talks about Bevrick as being the commercial hub of Lake Hiawatha and certainly putting a name brand there at the gateway will, will reinforce that as well. So, we've got positive aesthetics, we've got numerous positives here and based on the testimony before you, very little, if any, impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, this site will flow, will function, will operate safely and efficiently with adequate queue in terms of what's there now. And for those reasons, we think the board can move favorably on both D1 aspects of this. Interrelated, we've got the sign package, which is very tasteful here. You saw the elevations and the fact that, um, this new concept of, of Dunkin' is relatively modest with the coffee cup and the drive-through. That's really what's triggering the extra relief here is to have that second sign, which is more of a wayfinding or directional type of sign on the building. That's triggering the relief to have two signs on the building as opposed to one. And there's also some relief related to the size of those signs and to the height of those signs being above what the minimum requirement would be. The overall sign package is tasteful, it fits nicely and integrates well within the backdrop of the architectural theme here. It's going to promote brand familiarity, customer expectations, and is not going to be excessive or gaudy in the context of the, the overall landscape. The relief for the freestanding sign in the front is actually to have a freestanding sign that's too low. Your minimum monument size requirement is eight feet and I think this rises up to six feet, ten inches. So, the applicant is actually, in this case, asking the board to move on a sign that's lower than the minimum requirement.
Mr. McDonough, is there true for signs, anything with corporate brand or logo on it is classified as a sign here in particular?
That is true.
So, everything in the drive-through, all the branding you see in the drive-through all around gets counted as a sign?
That is true.
So, what we're noticing for a number of signs, it's really being generated by that?
Exactly, yes. All said, we think that's reconcilable under the C2 balancing, the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh the detriments. As I said, brand familiarity, customer expectations, all being advanced here. This is a really nice fit-up of this TD bank, which has been vacant now for two years. It's not contributing anything positive to the Bevrick corridor and so this will revitalize and put unproductive land back to functional use, which is spot-on with our goals of, of planning. It's also spot-on with your master plan, goal number five, which recognizes the importance of North Bevrick and actually encourages reuse of vacant and underutilized buildings. So, this is on point here as well, notwithstanding the relief for the, the use itself as a fast food restaurant in the B3 zone.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough. No further questions?
Questions of Mr. McDonough?
Nope.
No, no.
Nope.
Yes, Bernie, go ahead. The, uh, the, the border between the residence and the property, it, it looks from the picture you showed that there's no landscaping there. Do you think there should be some?
I'm just going to look at the top-down view on the last page. Um, I believe that landscaping, those evergreen trees are on, oh, you're talking about the gap?
Yeah, the gap, yeah. Some kind of gap you throw there.
Maybe that's where you could put some replacement.
Yeah. Some carpet lights.
Yeah. We could do some, uh, structure. Big deal.
You can put some rubber mites in.
Nothing that prevents putting some vegetation.
These thing are headlights, headlights going into the.
We can fill it up.
Well, that'd be covered over, out of the revised landscaping.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a question. All the signage has to do with Dunkin' Donuts. We saw the convenience use, or retail use, whatever it may be. Are you gonna be coming back for signs for that?
Well, that's a, it's a great question. I think there actually is, let me just catch up to the revised plan. Think there's relief related to the victory mark area? Is that correct?
I didn't see anything, that's why I'm asking.
It's just the numbers.
Just the number, okay.
So, when you get a tenant, whatever it may be, well, come back and see us.
No, he's, uh, he's the operator, he's operating the right thing.
Yeah, but you don't have any signs for it, for that side of the building.
Yeah, there was one.
You said one.
It was, yeah.
It said victory mark.
Yeah, there's not gonna be a sub, it's all one operator.
All right.
There it is, victory mark, just like the one, where is it? Across the street.
Yeah.
Where am I?
Right over there somewhere.
Over there somewhere.
By the exit section?
Yeah. Is that where your victory mark is? BP.
BP. All right.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, no.
Questions by the public, I hear none and see none.
I will rely on the testimony that's submitted and ask the board to approve what I think is required.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application and support of this application, I hear none and see none. Do we need to go into conference, guys?
Nope.
No. So, but it, it's, it's a good application for a building that is sitting vacant right now?
It's a good improvement.
I know, I have a lot of history on North Bevrick Road and I'm convinced this is gonna be an asset to the, to the road. Someone frame a resolution?
Application twenty-three, colon, zero-eight Dunkin', four thirty map favoring road, lot four forty-eight, lot thirty-two, zone B dash three to grant a, a site plan B with variance for the Dunkin' Donuts and convenience store with, uh, drive-through.
Second Jostwood's.
Any discussion or call or?
Berkley.
Yes.
Jostwood.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Starella.
Yes.
Free.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Tyra Kane.
Yes. Results variance printed.
Thank you. We'll go much quicker with the board's indulgence. I would like to.
Five-minute break?
We need a five-minute break.
Okay.
Could use some coffee, I'd say.
Okay, we're calling case, uh, twenty-three oh-nine. This is at, uh, da-da-da-da, one ninety-nine dash two thirty-nine Littleton Road.
Santander Bank, right?
Yes. I never knew, I didn't know, when did that bank close?
Four, two years.
Really? Boy, I'm out of the loop.
So, this is the relocation of the Dunkin' Donuts right down the road from where we're sitting now, down to Littleton Road, from its existing place into where the bank was. And, uh, I'm gonna ask for Mr. Santos to be recalled, I guess we need to re-swear.
Yes, okay.
Uh, sir, raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony about giving a report to yourself, you got? Can you, the operator of the site, have a seat to speak to the microphone, thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Santos, you, uh, you're operating the existing Dunkin' Donuts, you're gonna be operating the new one?
That is correct.
And this new one, as I said, is moving into the, what was formerly a bank. You are incorporating the larger space that was the bank from the smaller space to where you're at now. It's allowing you to redesign the Dunkin' Donuts into the more modern Dunkin' Donuts with the new finishes, the new colors, the new layout, the iced coffee out of the beer tab, all the bells and whistles that they do.
That is correct.
It also allows you now access to a rear door, which you did not have in the shopping center.
That is correct. The existing location, albeit smaller than the new, uh, unit, it also does not have a rear door. So, not only does the guest walk through the front door, but also the shipments come through the front door. So, this allows more space and the addition of a rear door.
And, of course, the other main addition is the, uh, drive-through, but all the food and all the materials, everything that you get for the Dunkin' Donuts is gonna be received in the same manner it is in the shopping center. The only difference in the shopping center now, the only difference being now it's coming through the rear door, is that correct?
That is correct. Currently now, the tractor trailer parks in front of the main plaza, because that's the only logical place, because they're receiving, uh, the deliveries to the front door. Whereas now, they can actually park the tractor trailer on the side, uh, preferably where the parking spaces is, leaving some floor in between, and they could receive the rear and less impact for the customers using the main plaza.
Thank you. You don't have anything else you want to add, right?
No.
I have no further questions.
Uh, deliveries during hours, business hours?
It can be, but we do have, uh, because of COVID and everything that changes our life during COVID, we're also allowed to take, uh, overnight deliveries. So, we can do it off-peak hours.
Yeah.
Or late hours or overnight hours, whatever's convenient for them.
I mean, I would think it would be kinda crowded with.
I'm sorry?
I would think it'd be kinda crowded on that site with tractor trailers and.
Uh, right now, that's the only choice we have.
I know, right now.
But given the circumstances, uh, we have started a lot of our stores doing overnight. Uh, the way it works is the DCT, which is our distribution center for Dunkin' Donuts, they come in, do the delivery overnight, whatever's frozen, put in freezer, refrigeration, put in refrigeration, and dry stock, they leave in the middle of the room. When our staff comes in, first thing they do is they pop out the lights, turn on the ovens, and put the orders away, and they start the portion of business.
What's the ovens?
Sorry?
What's the ovens used for?
Uh, although we don't bake onsite, we do, uh, we don't fry onsite, we bake onsite. Any of your muffins are baked onsite, your proustas are baked onsite, um, missile cookies, whatever, uh, it comes in, uh, pre-frozen stat, so it's like a bravo. And we just plug it in the oven or the faucet, and that's how you get the baked product.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Members of the public, any questions? Nope, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Mr. Korak?
Sir, raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony about giving a report to yourself, you got? For the record, state your name.
I do. Uh, name for the record, John Korak, last name C-O-R-A-K.
You're a sworn, um, engineer, you've been qualified before this board and also your license or full force of effect.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you've qualified and you're sworn.
It's really like, we're coming in with that.
So, Mr. Korak, we have a, a drive-through existing, but we had to change it for the Dunkin' Donuts and that's what's generating our variances. Can you just run through that real quick? And of course, now we have received comments from the county, so let's talk about.
Correct. So, we've received comments from the county, we've also had a little bit additional coordination with Dunkin', um, relating to how they prefer their driveway, their, their drive-through to be designed for optimal efficiency. Do have an exhibit that.
Sorry, is this A1?
A1 is an amended site plan sheet, um, dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, it replaced sheet H4 within our plan set. I'll go through essentially the changes from the existing condition to the proposed condition, including the modifications to this exhibit. Of course, there is an existing drive-through at the, the bank location, however, meeting with the Dunkin' standards, want to be able to provide, um, of course, the location to order, the order box, as well as the, uh, the secondary order location or, or pickup area for the Dunkin' Go customers, which is shown in that side-by-side, um, drive-through configuration, where the left side is your traditional ordering area, right side is Dunkin' Go. Um, that area is separated by, uh, what's called out now as a landscape island. Currently, at the drive-through for the bank, there's curb and that's what keeps the parking and the drive aisle separate from the drive-through lane. Here, we're able to, to increase that, um, provide a landscape island. Um, by ordinance, it is required to be five feet. There are sections of it that are four foot wide, so we are non-compliant, uh, for about twenty feet or so of that, uh, of that island, but then more than that five-foot compliance throughout the rest of that landscape island area. Um, we've also reconfigured, reconfigured the parking along the, the one-way drive aisle. So presently, the site has access, full movement driveway, um, toward the middle of the site in front of the, the main part of the shopping center, uh, and then ingress only as you move east and then an, uh, exit only as you head all the way to the east of the site. Uh, so we've reconfigured the, the parking spaces, um, that, that was necessary because of the location of the drive-through. Um, between the change in parking demand associated with Dunkin' and the change in the parking supply, um, it was a, a three-space reduction in requirement, three-space reduction in supply. So, we're still at the same, um, I guess, difference between requirement and supply, which presently on the site is a top-space deficiency, which would continue as an existing non-conformity in the proposed condition. Um, as far as the county comments go, the main thing the county asked for was at that main full movement driveway. Right now, there's a, there's really a short stub, um, divider between the entrance and the exit. They asked us to increase that, to provide a little bit of throat. And because we're actually shifting that internal drive aisle a little bit further into the site, we're able to accommodate that, accommodate the movements in the site very clearly. Um, and so that, that design has been put in place to satisfy the county's comments. Uh, we're also designated to, um, Dunkin' drive-through waiting spots. Um, essentially, this is a site that doesn't have, you know, a full three sixty circulation Essentially, this is a site that doesn't have, you know, a full three-sixty circulation for the drive-through, so if there is a large order, someone comes to the pickup window, the Dunkin' staff looking to keep that drive, they're moving, they may have a customer go to one of those two waiting spots to wait and have their food brought out to them by an employee, very typical for drive-through restaurants, Dunkin', and the like. Aside from that, that generally summarizes the changes on the site itself, the proposed parking realignment that we've done, the existing spaces do meet that ten-foot frontyard setback requirement, the proposed ones are closer, they're five-point-five feet, however, the sightlines from the driveway are not impacted by the parking spaces, and I think overall the layout functions better in that regard. And then, there are a couple of existing nonconformities that would not be modified as a result of this project. We're keeping the same building coverage, we're keeping the same rear-end setbacks, keeping the parking twelve-space deficiency consistent from existing to proposed. Overall, this layout works very well for Dunkin'. I think from a site plan perspective, traffic's, parking circulation perspective, this plan lays out well to accommodate the Dunkin' drive-through, and it's a use that's already on the site, has an existing customer base, and now, it's a new amenity and sort of a new way that customers are getting their coffee in the morning.
Thank you, Mr. Korak. I have no further questions. Which is accept to say you have no problems with Mr. Holliday's report. And then, we'll accept all comments.
That's correct.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, so, this particular drive-through is one side for Dunkin' Go and one side for regular customers, or is it two sides here for regular customers to merge into one?
It is, the left aisle is, the left drive-through is traditional, and then the right one is the Dunkin' Go.
Right, and how many, how many cars, because this is my concern with this spot, there's not a lot of space for a queue, so how many cars in queue do we have before we run into a problem with regular cars going through? That's my only hang-up on this one.
It's about eleven to twelve vehicles, eleven normal, twelve if they inch up bumper to bumper. You know, at other sites that we've studied, we see that queue typically around eight to nine during those peaks, and with, you know, with the next-gen stores from Dunkin', right, you know, the iced coffee on tap and the efficiencies built into a new layout, they're able to, you know, move, move customers quickly through the drive-through.
Yeah, just with Littleton Road being what it is right there, you'd kind of see cars stuck in the middle of the eastbound side or westbound side, eastbound side.
Right, and that's certainly something we want to avoid, and that's, you know, as part of this design, you know, how we've laid out that stack to try and accommodate it as best possible.
Did you show a stacking diagram at all?
On this revised plan, I don't have one, unfortunately.
Did you have it on the original?
The original one, yes, it was, it was a little bit more, it was about twelve to thirteen.
Why is there such a separation between the two windows? Pickup windows.
Essentially, the, yeah, so there's the two pads there with the, essentially, that's the separation distance to have someone pay at that first window, and if there's someone at the, the next window, there's still room to continue to move up.
Oh, going a little bit?
Yeah.
Mr. Santos, what, what, do you have any familiarity with how this site works?
I need to make one correction. The, it's a double menu. It's not a order maker. These, it's supposed to be two menu boards, yeah. So, like, let's use Bevrick for example, it is one mobile lane and one regular order menu. For this one, we're doing two menu boards.
All right, that was my question.
It is, I just wanted to clarify.
I apologize.
And I apologize for the confusion, this was changed by the brand. Originally, originally, we were going to go with just the same typical that we did in Bevrick, but every time the brand puts a new drive-through, they learn from it, so every time we do another drive-through, especially a double drive-through, they learn from the past, what do you call it, experiences, and keep getting a better outcome. This particular case with a dual window, because remember, Bevrick only had one window, with a dual window, which is one pay and one receive, similar to McDonald's, for example, and by having two menu boards, you expedite the traffic a lot faster. So, for example, if person A is placing the order, the other one's moving, person B is placing the order, the next one's moving, and that gives us better throughput by having the two windows and two ordering menus. It's an extra expense, but it helps us with the throughput.
So, you'd be stacking in both sides?
Exactly. So, it isn't like an on-the-go, I place the order, although, if you place an on-the-go, you can use the even lane, you just wait in queue. But by doing it this way, we do twice the volume at the same time.
At the same space.
You don't lose that thirty seconds of moving.
Thank you.
So, is this plan going to be changed again? Is this plan that we have going to be changed again, in terms of what you just stated?
That is the final.
This is correct.
This is correct, that's why I wanted to go up there and show where.
You answered the question I had, how fast you can move them through.
I'm confused. All right, the plan that you just handed me, I guess, the windows are where the, where the two lanes are?
Just down here, here, and here.
Point out the order boards.
Okay, so the order boards are toward the right, there are the two concrete pad areas, these are both order boards that can take traditional.
All right, so you pull up, up to the order board to order, and you got a choice of one or the other, depending.
Correct.
All right, tell me, explain to me where the queue, the cars are going to, are going to back up. You're going to, if you have seven or eight cars, you're in the middle of Littleton Road.
If you have seven or eight cars back behind the order board, yes, but that's not typical of the current-day Dunkin' operations, now that they've ironed out some of the inefficiencies from COVID, right? We've seen Dunkins that have backed out, that have had that kind of queuing, and so, with.
How do you prevent it?
So, preventing it, multiple ways here, right? One, it's the two order boards, helps take orders quicker, move cars through the system faster. Two, with the, sort of the inline, the pay at one window and then pick up food at the next window, they're able to increase that transaction rate, and so, they're able to process more cars quicker.
I don't know how that increases the rate, I guess they, they know better because they.
It's just less time spent at one.
You're making two stops, and you're talking to two different people, so to me, that extends the time.
Right, but when you have to make payment and then wait for the food, it has the ability to cause a singular point of delay that backs everyone up, whereas if you're able to, you're looking to keep a car moving.
I'm still more concerned with the order board. You're going to have at least five or six cars waiting to order, it takes a minute to order, a minute or two to order.
Typically, not that long to order, and, and for the, for the vehicle that does take longer, that's why.
You're assuming that everybody knows exactly what they want without looking at the order board.
During.
Some people have to, some people have to read.
During the peak morning times, when we have the most traffic, that, for the most part, that's the case. People know what coffee they want in the morning.
But I'm not concerned about the most part, I'm concerned about the part where the cars are packed up on the Littleton Road.
Right, and so, I think that at lower frequency time, people who come in and don't necessarily know what they want, that's also not part of that peak morning rush.
Two, I think, I'll take your example, let's say you do have that one.
You really need to talk to a microphone, because you didn't go forward with it.
The reason why the second menu board is important is for the exact reason you're saying. Let's say you do have one particular customer that is taking their time because he maybe doesn't come often, and he needs to look at the menu. While he's ordering, keep in mind that the other one keeps moving. So, by having the two able to order, one line keeps on progressing while that one customer, so let's say for a second argument, that one customer takes four minutes, the other lane still continues moving, that's why it's important. We couldn't, we didn't want to do an on-the-go on this case, because then, you're talking about one lane at a standstill, and if, let's say, you had no on-the-go, no one would be using the second lane. By doing two, you keep, if one gets a hangup, the other one keeps moving. If there's no hangup, then they both keep moving.
Is there going to be any on-the-gos, on-the-gos going through that lane?
They can, but remember, on-the-gos, there's no ordering, they just fly through. They get to the window, my name is Joe.
Assuming their order is ready.
Your order is, if they're doing what they're supposed to.
You're not placing it on Littleton Road.
If that helps answer your question. That's the pulling between.
It doesn't really alleviate my concern of cars stacking up waiting to order at a busy time in the morning when there's a lot of traffic, and there's bad cars with the rear ends sticking out of the Littleton Road.
That's the reason why we went this route, because, first of all, it's a, much more expensive to do the second menu board, it's not just a sign, now it's on digital, so you're talking about a second line, you're talking about anywhere from seventy to ninety thousand just for the equipment for the second line. So, no one does it if they don't need it. Because of the sensitivity, you know, it is a family business, and it is a franchise, but we take pride in doing what's best to the community work, so it doesn't matter if it's a standover or a sipping, we take pride in doing what's best for the community, not just what's best for us. In this particular location, to address any concerns of that manner, that's why we're proposing two. So, if there is that hiccup, we have kind of a buffer to take care of that.
And my other question, you talked about the rear door being able to take the orders through the rear door?
Deliveries.
Deliveries, I meant, from, from the Dunkin'.
Yep.
Where's the truck going to park, especially if it's during the day, when you get people trying to order?
Right now, just confirms with my son-in-law, general manager, as of today, all of deliveries are done overnight.
Okay.
And.
Sort of when the stores are closed.
So, it's.
Does it make any difference?
No, that can be part of the resolution.
I'd be happy to.
All right, I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Nope.
I have a question regarding access to the smaller building, because the, let's say that parking lot is full, and you're parking in the big lot and walking to the smaller building.
Sure.
Just the safety of pedestrians walking there, I don't know. There used to be a marked-out path, now is there going to be landscaping in the island, or?
Previously, right, there was the curb and then the marked-out path, which, you know, gave somewhere to walk, but not necessarily truly protected area, we could, we could work to strike part of that drive aisle to help accommodate some of those pedestrian movements.
What's in that smaller building?
Smaller building is the number of, because this is where the Domino's is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's.
Three weeks.
It's a couple.
Yeah, a couple of restaurants.
What is proposed for the island, the landscaping?
Clearly, it's landscaping.
Like, a log robbery type thing?
Right, if we haven't designed the landscaping, I presume that would be a condition to provide a landscaping.
Can't handle sixty-five cars, like, trip the line.
In terms of the property, it doesn't look like the owner of that site has invested in landscaping of any sort. I mean, it is, I mean, that's kind of the center of town.
A lot of pervious there.
Yeah, but right around the edges is dirt.
Well, you probably can't keep vegetation, because when it snows and they plow all that salt and ice up onto the curb, it kills all the plants.
You could put something out there, other than dirt.
Well, you can put, you can put the asteroids up.
Put stones.
Decorative stone, yeah.
Look a lot better than my body.
Any other questions?
No.
Next witness.
So, we have other exhibits part of this package, we have signs that were shared by Mr. Elke, and I'm just going to reference those, because it's the same again we did before. If anyone has any questions about signage on the site, we'll bring Mr. Elke up to answer those questions, otherwise, I'm going to go right to Mr. McElroy.
Okay.
Raise your hand if you're a firm testimony about the providers yourself you got.
Yes, I do.
All licenser in effect.
Yes, they are.
Qualified. Mr. Chairman, the witnesses are qualified, and Sworn as next.
Mr. Dunn, you're familiar with the applicants and all the good stuff we do.
Sure, we've moved from the B three neighborhood commercial zone to the B two highway commercial zone. We're dealing with three categories of relief here, one is a V, but it's not a V-one, it's a V-three, it's a conditional use variance, to allow for a fast-food restaurant, which is permitted in the zone, but it's only permitted as part of a pad site or freestanding building. We're looking for a relief to have this use as an end cap as opposed to a freestanding building. I think you've got a good predicate of evidence to prove that this can flow and function safely and efficiently as an end cap as opposed to a pad site on this center. Also related to the relief is the fact that the islands are four feet long as opposed to five feet wide, that's to provide separation, that's the planning intent, probably provide some landscaping in there as well. We can certainly accommodate a landscape plan within a four-foot width and achieve that active separation, so the applicant is asking the board to move on one foot in terms of that conditional use of relief. Second bundle of relief pertains to parking, again, from John's testimony, I think we got a good predicate there. Parking setback is going to be as close as five-point-five feet to the front property line, whereas ten feet is the minimum required. It's basically following the existing setback that they are now. Some of those parking stalls are actually at zero feet, so these are not going to be any closer than spaces that are already there. The parking count is a deficit of twelve, which is an existing condition, so while the parking requirement goes up, the parking supply is going up as well, so we maintain that twelve-space delta. And then, finally, the only reason why we need signage relief is because your ordinance allows for one sign per building, the applicant is asking for two here, but the existing bank has two signs as well, so it's basically a continuation of a previously approved or an existing nonconforming condition. All said, the project positives here would substantially outweigh the negatives, you can see from the photographs, I remember this as the old Grand Union site, has always had retail associated with it, it's going to give a nice face, a nice street presence with a grand name along the roadway, it is going to fill that space and put it back for functional use, again, another service use along the service corridor, and a retrofit of existing space, this is not new-hilt per se, so that's going towards the plan goal for variety of land use at appropriate locations, and efficient land use, and a positive aesthetic, this will give a nice fresh image to the corridor. Based on all the testimony, all relief can be granted without any substantially adverse impacts, this is another net positive for the community, and I would offer that as expert criteria for the recall.
Thank you, Mr. McElroy. I have no further questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
John, you're open.
Do you repeat down the hours on this one, same hours?
Same, yes.
We just say, actually, originally, this was a twenty-four hour location, we've reduced since COVID, it's four to ten, four a.m. to ten p.m.
I had four-thirty to ten-thirty.
Sorry?
I had four-thirty to ten-thirty. There's your other one. Four-thirty to ten-thirty would be out.
That's the last one.
Yeah.
This one is oriented business, it's a business.
So, it would be thirty minutes old, and the timer turned the lights.
This one's thirty minutes more because the reason this quarter is busy.
A little more active, yeah.
Josh, you got any questions?
No, the.
You're good?
And there's a report, you're going to respond to those comments.
Everybody's good?
Yep, good.
Members of the public, I see none? That's it, Joe? And I will rely on the testimony provided.
And you did a great job, by the way, if you don't say so yourself.
Joe, what was the last thing you put a bear on?
I admitted to it.
Just some of them aren't quite as good as others, right? Oh, my gosh, okay. No conference?
No conference.
There's no members of the public here, so, no conference?
Nope. Everybody else is okay.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it's a, there's going to be, there's probably going to be some times when that.
There's going to be, there's probably going to be some times when that... Those lines are going to have a...
I just remember all the conversations we had on New Road.
Oh, come on. It's a different animal, my God.
On this one, there's parking space and refu...
Yeah, there's no, the lines are backed up. You're parking hard, you go inside. You didn't have that option there.
And plus, there's people in that, that have a new apartment complex. They can't park the cars.
All the people that visit, they're parked and just getting a donut and going across the street. Okay, frame a resolution, someone, please.
Okay, application 23:09 Dunkin', 199-239 Littleton Road, Block 393.01, lots one, Zone B-2. Recommend granting site plan, D variance for Dunkin' Donuts, a convenience store with a drive-through. Any qualifiers for that or no?
Subject to additional landscape, thank you.
Okay.
Were you, you were considering putting some mine traffic for pedestrian cam?
Yes.
And that?
Is there a second?
Secondary.
Any discussion or call or roll?
Brockowitz.
Yes.